All right, I'd like to call to order the August 22nd meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you and welcome. Mary, can you do the roll call, please?
I would love to. Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next is our approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Oh, okay, we have a mic that isn't working. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
We can hear you now. All right. And we've got a motion on the floor for the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next is our announcements. It's here, you guys, on Tuesday, September 5th is the first day of school. September 12th, which is a Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there'll be a subcommittee on policy here in the community room. On September 12th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. September 19th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there will be a school board work session in the community room. Not listed, but also on September 19th, after the work session is the subcommittee on community engagement meeting. And September 26th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next on our agenda is closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero three, the board will adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. Can I get a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
By Mary, in a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We'll now move to closed session. We are good to go. We are returning from closed session back to open session, so return to open session. The board was closed. I gotta get the statute out, sorry.
13D point zero three.
Yeah. I know, my thing doesn't move. Oh, it's not on there.
For the purposes of negotiation.
The board was closed in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero three for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. Next, we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody who would like to address the board? All right, hearing none, we will proceed to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the personnel report from August 22nd, the approval of the Bright Works formerly Metro XU membership for 2023-2024 as presented on August 8th, 2023, and the school board minutes from the August 8th meeting and the August 15th work session. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second?
I'll second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have discussion reports and information items. We'll start with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Jessica.
Oh, terrific. Okay. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I think our district is obviously gearing up for the new school year, but a lot of our partners around the city and the state are also gearing up for the new year, so there's been a lot going on. I attended a webinar by the Department of Labor and Industry. They're doing a series on wage and hour laws, and so they did a session on workplace provisions supporting nursing and lactating employees and the Federal Pump Act, so I attended that. MSBA also hosted the State Demographer, Megan Dayton, to talk about Minnesota state demographics, and so that is a recorded session of, folks are interested in that. It really was interesting to hear a lot about how the demographics are going to be changing over the next several decades, particularly as they're looking at how infrastructure changes are needed to accommodate the changes in the different generations. So that was really interesting. I would encourage people to check that out. MDE also hosted an extensive session on working through the legal framework of school discipline, so I learned a lot from that, both the overall framework of school discipline, but then also how some of that is changing through some of the legislation that's been passed. I got, I did a community event, the Friends, through a group called Friends of Cordyac Park, that met to talk with city and county officials about conservation and use of the park, and I know that Cordyac Park is a place that is close to many of our school buildings and we utilize, so I was interested to hear that conversation. I also attended, as did all of you, the work session of the board on August 15th. I had the opportunity to attend the City Hall Open House last week, and so that was really fantastic to see that building and so many members of our school community show up to learn more about the new city offices. I'd had the opportunity to talk with some of our members of our youth commission for the city, many of whom are our students, which was great, as well as talk to several of our city council members and the mayor. And then I also had conversations with multiple parents, answering, fielding questions about the new school year, and also had conversations with Director Petway, Director Palmer, Director Granland. And I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. Mary?
Well, mine is not as long as Jessica's this week, so. I also attended the work session and the policy meeting prior to this one. I also had an opportunity to attend the City Hall Open House as well, and it was so much fun. A lot of thought went into those, into those spaces, and I'm really excited about that. I have been helping out at CA, getting ready, and it's been wonderful to sort of, today they had the web leaders in, so the eighth graders who are coming back to help all the new students to the school. And it was so wonderful to hear laughter in the hallway and to just see so many students that are, you know, coming back into our school. And I remarked to another person today in the library that I'm so very happy that our district really invests in our students in helping them become leaders and supporting them, and, you know, even at the eighth grade level and below, so that was really wonderful. I have also had a lot of conversations with families as we are transitioning, you know, from summer and into the school year. Fielded a lot, a lot of questions about those things. And then I talked with Lori, I'm sorry, Chair, Chair Mueller, Director Petway, Director Maderas, and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm sure I left something out because I always do, but that's, that's about it.
Perfect. Thank you. Michelle?
Cool. So I attended last week's work session as well. I tried to attend a garden tour at Lomianki, but we got hailed on.
Oh, no!
So we just stood in the rain with our umbrellas for a while, and then we went home. So that would have been nice, but I've been there plenty of times. It is still beautiful, and everyone should go and try to see what they can find there. Everything there is free to pick and take and gather. So it's a, it's a pretty nice community garden. I attended the Rumors Play that was put on here at the high school. That was fun. And I also attended that with a member Granland here. She said she forgot something. So I saw her there, so we enjoyed that together. It was a great, great play, and I had never seen it, so it was great what they did. I attended Minnesota BIPOC Collective Leaders Network Lunch, which was a lot of fun, getting to know other people in the community who can help me out and resource and network a little bit. So that was a great experience, getting to see people in person, because most of our meetings are on Zoom. So that was pretty nice. And I also attended the City Hall opening. It is a beautiful space. We enjoyed all the colorful names of the office spaces and just, just great use of new space that they have. It was really nice. Great food, great everything, good atmosphere. And I have spoken with community members and parents, just trying to get people to get ready for the new school year and the transportation thing, and just trying to get people to, you know, do it if I know that they probably wouldn't. And I've had conversations as well with, with the Heights Mayor and other city council members and, and city leaders, as well as members Maderas, Granland, and Superintendent Stenvik.
Thank you. Julie?
I also attended the board work session last week and the policy meeting prior to this meeting. And last week, I also met with Superintendent Stenvik on the expenses for June and did my review of the expenses, and also received answers to the questions I had from April and May, and those answers were perfect, you know, the expenses are well supported and approved, so I feel really confident that we're spending the money in the way that is the expectation is. And everything's pretty open and well documented. So kudos to, to Xena and her team, and Brian, and.
Great, thanks, Julie.
Laura?
Oh, gosh, I feel like I just haven't been doing anything at all because I'll have to live vicariously through all of your ventures over there. So it's a busy time for me personally this time of year, but I did manage to make it to the work-study session last week. Also as well, the City Hall opening. What an amazing space and a new collaboration to be able to get that, that built. I love the, I love the fact that you can sit outside and look right in on the council. I think that, I think that they wanted to, you know, it's, it's very a visual, like, we want to have transparency. I think that's kind of cool, you know? And all, and having that extra area for growth there, that's, and I had so many conversations with, you know, the city council members, the mayor, various community members, staff, teachers, students. I mean, everybody was there. So I think, I think that's really going to be just another wonderful space for the community to get together. We've always been the backbone of that, so it's nice to see, you know, both sides of the town being covered and being accessible. Let me see, the chair meeting just prior to this. I've had conversations off and on, I think with just about everybody at this table at some point, and thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. I have been on, I was on vacation for about 10 to 12 days, so thank you to Laura for chairing our last meeting. I appreciate that, so I could be gone.
Any other other?
You did it for her, didn't you?
I dragged it out.
I did attend our work session and the chair meeting prior to that. I also attended the City Hall Open House, and it was actually a great opportunity to have lots of conversations with community members, so did that as well as city staff. So I had the conversations with community members also related to school opening, as the others have talked about. Had the policy meeting just prior to this, the chair meeting just after that, and also had conversations with Member Palmer, Member Granland, and several conversations with Superintendent Stenvik. So that is my report. And Superintendent Stenvik, you have a report for us in correspondence?
I do, thank you. Last week, I attended a superintendent conference and heard presentations on the strategic planning process. I was excited to get the slides for that, along with generative artificial intelligence equity and mental health for educators. Those are all big topics right now in the world of education. I also had the opportunity to join a small group of superintendents to meet with the Star Tribune Editorial Board to provide an overview of the challenges that school districts are facing. This was not a, linked to a specific article, but we were rather providing topics for possible future articles. Unfortunately, we are dealing currently with staffing shortages and are working hard to fill positions very quickly. We continue to meet in negotiation with local number 710 teachers' union, and I want to thank everyone for their time and thoughtful discussions during the process. I should note that tomorrow I have a transition meeting with both the outgoing and incoming union presidents, so I wanted to congratulate Peg Nelson on her new role as the local 710 president as of September 1st. Tomorrow, we're looking very for, very much to welcoming new employees for Columbia Heights Public Schools. I really want to thank the Teaching and Learning Department for preparing three days of onboarding for new staff, and I am definitely looking forward to a great start to the school year. I will be joined on the first day at Highland by the Assistant Commissioner of Education Mansfield to greet the students that morning. Also, tomorrow, a team of administrators are meeting with the Columbia Heights Police Department in light of recent legislation, as highlighted by Member Maderas. And since our last board meeting, I communicated with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Palmer, Member Petway, Member Hool, Member Granler, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have our capital project update with Director Hennigens. No problem. I'm opening it right now. Yay, thank you.
Sorry, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Just give me one minute and I will get logged in here. I knew that I would have to redo this. And then we got multi-factor authentication, so.
Helps with cybersecurity.
Yes. Our cyber security insurance policy appreciates that statement.
Insurance will be coming in, in September. We're working on it right now. Okay.
We would very much like to keep that cyber policy.
Well, we're hopeful that our cyber policy will actually go down, but we will see. Okay. There we go. Okay. So this evening, just a quick review of our 2023 summer capital projects and then kind of forecasting some 2024 capital projects. Similar presentation to what we've done every year. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, we're talking about all the different funding streams that we use and how we receive those funds. We go across all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, all aligning with our Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. Again, this is just an informational presentation. So summer 2023 was a little bit of lighter year, and I think next year we'll probably see something very similar as far as large projects. With this year, we have a Valley View Elementary roof project going on currently. And that was, well, I'll talk about that more in a minute. And that's funded through a long-term facility maintenance, and that's sections A and B of that building. Columbia Academy Kitchen Serving Area Project, that was a bid-out project, and partially funded through food service and capital projects levy. And then we've been working on some high school mechanical work, which is long-term facility maintenance and capital projects levy. And those are a lot of smaller, different projects, replacing controllers and different parts and different components for that automation of the system, just kind of revamping it and updating it to allow it to hopefully run more efficiently as we move forward. So just to start and talk about the Valley View project, this is the overhead shot. These are the pictures of the sections we're doing. So it's above the gym and above the cafeteria, the sections that we're doing right now. So we called the bid on October 25th. We had the bid opening on November 15th, and then board took action on January 10th to approve the bid. And we were projected to complete in August 2023, more specifically this Thursday. And we were on track. We're a little bit behind now. We had one rain day a week ago, whenever that day that was, and then we have there two hot days. So it's kind of cut down the roof work during the day, as you can imagine, when the heat index is over 100 degrees. So, but still, no worries about getting completed before the start of school or substantially completed. There might be some, you know, trim work around the perimeter of the building, but the roof will be ready to go. One other thing that did slow us down a little bit is, is we made some changes to allow for some additional solar to the building. It's not part of this project, the solar isn't, but we do prep the roof a little bit different. So this building currently, as you can see by the picture, doesn't have any solar on the roof. It's one of our buildings that, that doesn't. So we're looking to fill the open areas of those sections of the building with the new roof with solar. So there's definitely solar opportunities out there, and we want to capitalize on that for future savings in, in energy use. So that's the roof project. This one's a little bit more fun, I guess, for people because it's more visual and how the workflow will work for the cafeteria. And those that know what that serving area looked like at Columbia Academy before and the function of it should really appreciate this. So we, the board approved bid, called a bid on December 13th. We had the bid opening January 5th, and then the board took action on approving the awarding of that bid on January 24th. So this is as of this morning, or actually, not really this morning. This is as of about 3:00 today, when I was taking this picture. And so we had our walk, initial walkthrough with our health inspector, and, and it was, it was very good. Couple of things that we'll have to take care of. And she'll do the final walkthrough on Monday, and we'll be good to go. So things are really looking great there. We have a really good flow for those two lines, both with hot and cold, and separating them, speeding up the lines. You know, it's really a refreshed look and equipment and just abilities to serve our kids differently at Columbia Academy and do more things. So back in the kitchen, we have a new dish machine, which is something that was necessary. The old one was very old and very hard to keep at correct temperature, which is necessary. So we've, we fixed that. We've reorganized the kitchen a little bit to make the flow of work better, and they do have a new oven back there as well. So that will support the additional, the additional recipes that they're adding in, the mix. They've been working very hard at recipes and getting, surveying the students. They're really building mostly off of the high school and getting feedback from the high school. They tested out a bunch of recipes earlier this week, and I got to go down and do some taste testing, old versus new, which was kind of fun. I was very full that day because I'd eaten lunch before I went down there. But it was, it was, so it's, it's, it's a really a great project at Columbia Academy. We're looking forward to fully opening it up to the students. I had got a couple more pictures, so this is just from behind a little bit, what the serving line looks like. I didn't take a lot of pictures, but new saying on the back wall, make, make today count, and on the other side, feed your future self. So this is what the, this is the hot serving area, and then directly back here on the backside is where the cold. So we've got one line coming through on cold this way, and then the hot line coming through here. So all this is new. We raised the ceiling back here a little bit. We had the opportunity to do that. About six inches would open up the space a lot and allowed it, allowed it, allowed us to do different things with the lighting, which was great as well. And that wood floor look is a tile, obviously. But, so forecasting for next year, we will, Highland Elementary section of roof is the last roof identified as needing immediate replacement. So we're finally through the five years of, of roof replacement that, through the study. So that's, feels very good to be at that point because then we can shift gears and really look, focus on the mechanical aspect of the buildings, which is what we've started to do this year with some of the smaller projects and replacing those controllers, but, you know, we'll be able to ramp that up. We've been going out to different districts and looking at systems that they've put in, that they more recently put in that replace the existing systems that, that they had that are exactly like ours or very similar, those unit ventilators in the classrooms, and what can we do, you know, to make those rooms, one, more comfortable, quieter, because the unit ventilators are loud, because they have these fans spinning, and just easier for us to control the climate of that space, so the hots and the colds. So that doesn't come at a low number. It's not free. Mechanical is very expensive. So we're gonna have to pick away at it, and so we're looking at that. We still are working on that brick tuck pointing study and, and not sure yet if we're gonna have any identified more immediate needs on that brick tuck pointing, so ensuring that our buildings are the outside are brick. And, and sometimes that, that mortar in between just needs to be replaced. And as the rain comes, it just goes right through it. And so we've had that experience at Columbia Academy at the roof line or the top part of the gym area, and we did that a couple of years ago, or a few years ago now. So we'll look to see if we identify any spaces that have an immediate need, and those, that project may show up to the board. We just don't know what that study is going to say yet. And then we'll continue to look at those deferred maintenance projects within the buildings, in the classrooms, the casework, areas of flooring where we know we have asbestos tile underneath the carpet, and, and we'll continue to look at those and as we continue to remove that asbestos from our facilities. And that would be a capital projects levy funded. And except for asbestos, that'll come out of long-term facility maintenance. So that's what we're forecasting in '24. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hennigens? I will just comment that, just thank you to you and your team. Always a lot to do in a short amount of time, and there is a lot of factors that go into these projects, so thanks for your hard work on that.
Yeah.
So we have asbestos tile underneath carpet. Now, my understanding is that if we don't disturb it, it's fine, right?
Yeah. It's, if, if it's undisturbed, and in today's age, we don't cover up asbestos, we remove it. But there was an error where they would cover it up because it was a lot cheaper option than abating it. The problem is, is that when we have to replace the carpet, that's 20-plus years old or almost 30 years old in some cases, you will disturb it. Yeah. So, because the carpet's glued to the tile and it'll pull up the tile, and so that's disturbing it. So then we, we take care of it at that point. So we're not, we're not actively seeking it under the carpets, but as that carpet needs to be replaced, we're removing it.
Okay. Great question.
Yeah, it was a good question.
Jessica?
Can you remind us of the general timeline for bidding some of these 2024 projects? I know in the recent past, we have not been able to go forward with some of our planned projects because of the, the bid costs coming in, so I'd just like to get a sense of that.
Yes, thank, good question. So with the roof, that's been pretty good for us. Timelines have been okay. We'll, we're on the same timeline we did last year, so this fall, September, November, or September, actually, October, I think we'll see that come to the board for that roof. For the mechanical stuff or the brick tuck pointing, you know, we hope to have that brick tuck pointing study finished here in the next couple of weeks before the school year. It was supposed to be done before the end of August, so. And so that we can look at that and make some immediate plans for that. The mechanical stuff, we've held off of the big. The mechanical stuff, we've held off of the big projects for '24, because we cannot get the equipment that we need. So, we're, we're going to focus on the smaller, smaller projects. So, they're not going to be large bid-out projects, they'll be smaller projects. We'll be purchasing off of pre-bid state contracts or, or source well contracts for the equipment, and, and that's how we'll proceed with the mechanical, just because we can't, we can't, we can't meet the timelines to get the equipment for FY '24, for summer of '24, 2024. And that also gives us the opportunity to look at, and spend more time going out to other districts and talk about that transition to really replacing the mechanical systems within the buildings, you know, focusing on those classrooms with those unit ventilators. They are at end-of-life, we, you know, and a lot of our rooftops are at end-of-life, so we have a lot of needs there. So, we'll, we'll have to look at how we approach that. In all likelihood, we're going to have to approach it a building at a time, and there will be a point in time when we'll have to look at maybe other opportunities for revenue streams from the long-term facility maintenance. So, there are options within there that, you know, aren't increases to, like going up for bond or something. So, definitely things we'll have to look at in the future, because there's definitely high needs, but yes, for next year, I don't, right now, I know we have in the hopper the bid project for the roof, and everything else is, is kind of potentially lower than that bid threshold at this point.
Thank you. Great question. Michelle?
Will the Highland roof get the same maintenance as the other one, or I thought you said the entire roof?
Highland's not going to be the entire roof. It's just, it's, it's a different section of the roof. It's, it's, it's one section of Highland roof. It's a little bit larger section, about the same amount of square footage. It was actually part of the bid package when we went out before. We just couldn't afford both Highland and Valley View at the same time. We thought maybe if the bids came in really good, very, being very optimistic, it didn't, that we would be able to afford to do both at the same time. But it, we would look at the same process of, for that section, we replace, put that out to bid, replace that section, and then plan for solar for that building as well, because that's the other building that doesn't have any solar. The middle school, high school, and North Park all have solar.
Thank you. Julie?
So, the tuck pointing project, I know tuck pointing is very meticulous, okay? So, it's labor-intensive. Is there other options rather than tuck pointing? I mean, is there a way to wrap? Any, any other kind? Have we looked into what that might be other options for, you know, saving the brick, maybe go away from the brick and do something else? I don't know.
That, that would be definitely a larger look. So, I mean, dealing with the maintenance of the brick itself is definitely the most cost-effective way or cost-effective approach. It does last a lot, a very long time, as, as obvious. The, you know, the only building that has any area of brick tuck pointing done is Columbia Academy, and all of our buildings are 58, 59, 61, 63, 66. I mean, so they're, they're, it's, it is a very, a good, long-term structure. It really is. So, maybe in the future, there is definitely an opportunity. I mean, that's part of this, that will be part of the study, you know, moving forward, because, you know, the study's going to identify the immediate need. And then, you know, going forward, who can predict what's going to happen with technology and, and, and opportunity to do things differently 20 years down the road, 25 years down the road? So, things will change, but I don't know what, exactly what, I don't predict. We don't have water coming through the walls and buildings right now, so I don't predict us to have any immediate needs. You know, CA was obvious. We had water coming into the basement of the building, it was just pouring in when it would rain, and so it was constantly flooding the locker room and the basement. So, we have a definite need there. So, but you, the Board will hear about that for sure.
Great. Thank you. Laura?
I was just remembering, I, I seem to recall back maybe 2010, 2012, that I think we did do some tuck pointing at a couple of the buildings, because I didn't know what it was. So, I was just like, what is that? Oh, okay, that sounds important.
I think it was just Columbia Academy.
Yeah, exactly. I remember the Columbia Academy. That was actually pretty, it was up pretty high when that, when that came in. So, I know that we didn't even really look at that at that time, so it was kind of a, an unexpected expense, you know, that we, we had to move forward with. So, good, take good care of the buildings. I'm glad you're staying on top of it, and, and it's got a logical progression. Get to take, take care of some of the small projects till we can be sure that we're going to get delivery on the larger ones.
Great. Any other question? Jessica?
When you sampled the food for Columbia Cafe, did you try the orange chicken?
They did not make orange chicken, but they did make a beef stir fry that was made in two different ways, which was very good. I liked both ways, but there was one that was an obvious winner.
The reason why the orange chicken wasn't part of it is because you cannot make it more perfect.
No, it's already, it's already iconic. I get it. Yeah, thank you.
I love that. Jessica. That question won the day. Any other questions for Brian or Director Henneken?
Not a question, but a comment. It's been really wonderful to see all of the work going on at the roof at Valley View. I realized, I think, today, as I was driving down the hill, that you could see the work, actually, from, from the hill, and that was kind of, it was very, it was very neat to see and to be able to see, like, so much of our district within such a small area. And I think it's really important for our community to see that we are taking care of these things and that we are really investing in our, not just our buildings, but in our kids' futures. So, thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Henneken. Next, we'll move on to action items. We've got one tonight, our superintendent goals for 2023, 2024. Superintendent Stenbik?
Yes, thank you. At our last work session, we had a robust discussion and dialogue around goal setting. I presented the school board with two goals that are also aligned to, each of them are aligned to one of the eight areas on the rubric from the Minnesota School Board Association. So, I just wanted to read the two goals and then seek approval from the school board. So, Goal 1, which is aligned to Standard 1 Governance, is, in collaboration with the school board, determine a process for renewing the existing Columbia Heights Public Schools strategic plan and roadmap, including seeking input from students, staff, and the community to determine new goals and metrics to be ready to carry out the process in September of 2024. And Goal 2, which is aligned to Standard 6 Teaching and Learning, is oversee and monitor the district-wide focus on literacy, including the implementation of professional development, instruction, coaching, resources, and leadership. And with that, I'll seek approval for those goals for this year.
Thank you. So, our course of action here is we'll do a motion in a second for the approval of superintendent goals, and then we'll have discussion. So, can I get a motion to approve the superintendent goals for 2023, 2024? So moved? Mary, in a second.
A second.
Second by Julie, and then any discussion.
I can, I can make a comment. We went over, I, I think, each and every line of these. So, thank you, Xena, for being very clear on where exactly you wanted to focus and what exactly you were looking, I mean, so we do, really do have a very clear understanding. It's just a quick line in there, but there is a lot more underneath it. There's like several different steps and things to, to hit in there, and thank you in the interest of time to not read the entire document. So, I do appreciate that. So, and thank you for your, continuing with your, your, your goals from this year into next year as well, especially with overseeing the, the different financial aspects and stuff. So, even though that's not listed in your goals, you're still finishing that up through December. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll make a comment as well, is that I think, I appreciate the conversation that we, as a Board, had in conjunction with Superintendent Stenbik regarding her goals and regarding direction, student achievement, and, and really that our goal discussion created or morphed into a strategic roadmap discussion, strategic plan discussion, which I think was very, again, like, to use your word, very robust, and I think it provided a lot of insight for all of us in terms of what we're hoping for, for the district moving forward, or looking for, and then therefore how that lies in conjunction with the superintendent's goals. So, I feel very aligned in terms of what the Board is looking for with these goals that the superintendent has for this year as well.
Jessica?
I would just add my endorsement for both of those goals, and I think the fact that our work session discussion did veer into a lot of strategic planning, conversation, discussion of student achievement, just really underscores how central those two goals are to our work over the next year. I think in particular, looking at the strategic planning process and how that touches every single thing that we do as a district, all of our core values, and having the opportunity for our, our school and broader communities to be part of that discussion. So, I appreciated that. I did just want to ask one question. We had some discussion at the work session, but I wanted just anyone who's watching the meeting tonight to understand that when you talk about setting two goals for next year across the eight standards of that rubric, that, I mean, I guess, forming this into a question, so it's, it's my understanding that, that doesn't mean that you're saying, oh, we're just going to have these two goals, and that's all we're going to do for the year. So, could you just talk a little bit about how those two, those two specific goals sort of intersect with the other work that, that we do throughout the year and the other components that you're really leading our community through this year?
Yes, thank you. The, the role of the superintendent is aligned to eight standards with this, with, from the Minnesota School Board Association, and that includes community relations, that includes overseeing, you know, the entire leadership team from all of the buildings and grounds pieces that we're hearing this evening, to financial responsibilities, everything from art programming that is birthed all the way up into adulthood. So, academics, human resources, all of those different components with special education, English learners, student relations, all of those pieces. So, because that is, it's a, it's a vast role, we, we, I hone in on two areas of particular focus for the year. And so, this year, we know, the Board has discussed at length, that we know with the strategic plan expiring, it's a big undertaking, and so it's, it's kind of an additional, maybe something that we're not doing every year, followed by our continued focus on literacy. So, this will be year two for the same goal, and just being able to go deeper to affect that academic change.
Thank you. I think for the public or, or school families that might be watching these meetings, it can get confusing sometimes when we talk about, you know, the district's strategic plan, the superintendent's goals, our building principals come and they present their goals for the year, and so just being able to note sort of how all of that work fits together and is aligned, and making it clear that, that those are the two particular areas of focus, but we're continuing to advance everything that we're working on as a district. So, thank you for that.
And I do think one other comment with that, again, for anybody who's listening in the room or, or online or watching this later, that in the superintendent contract, there is financial incentive for Superintendent Stenbik to succeed in her goals. So, kind of putting that forth, I mean, it's not a billion dollars, obviously, but there's some financial incentive there for her to achieve those goals and move the, the district in the direction that we would like to see it in. And, and even last year, although Superintendent Stenbik met and exceeded expectations regarding her goals, declined any of her financial compensation that was due to her under her contract due to the financial constraints of the district that we have been dealing with. So, I think it's important to know that she's meeting and exceeding expectations in terms of the goals, even though there was not a financial reward for her at the end, because she did decline that compensation that was quite honestly due to her under the contract. So, it is important for the district to have superintendent have these goals, to have focus, to, to direct and lead her team, and it allows her to have that, that momentum forward for what we're all expecting and what our community is expecting as well. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Board topics. Are there any Board topics? Michelle?
So, the Monarch Festival was canceled due to expected rain, even though it didn't. So, it got moved to Thursday this week, still at Kodiak Park, and I believe it's from 5:00 to 8:00. I don't want to, okay, I'm getting confirmation, so 5:00 to 8:00. So, yeah, that's back on, just in case.
Great. Thank you. Other Board topics?
I just wanted to note, because I'm not sure if everybody, like, got a chance to review the most recent MSBA email in its entirety, but they, they will be hosting virtual, a virtual fall advocacy tour, where they're going to have sessions for different areas of the state, and then a statewide session to talk about various ideas for the legislative platform. So, there's a formal process to submit recommendations or resolutions for their legislative platform in the fall, but I know we've talked as a Board about a lot of challenges that we're facing, that some of our other partner districts are also facing, that have a legislative component to that. So, I'm planning on attending, and I just, I know sometimes those emails, there's a lot there, so I just wanted to point that out. I do know that the one that they have planned for the metro actually conflicts with our school board meeting, but they are offering a sort of one-for-all areas of the state on Friday, September 15th in the morning. So, I think that's exciting, especially in, in light of Superintendent Stenbik talking about your, your conversations with other superintendents and around some of those challenges. So, maybe there are some areas that members of this Board would want to put forward a resolution about. So, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Laura?
I actually did want to bring up one other thing, too, is, is that there, the elections for, for the delegate assembly should be coming up. That is a self-nominated process. If you wanted to nominate yourself or participate in that, you just go on the MSBA website and fill out that application.
I was going to bring that up and ask if we were going to have someone represent our Board.
Yeah, you just, yeah, you self-nominate, yeah. I, I, no, it is a wonderful experience, and, and if there, if there is some sort of thing that we would like to see MSBA advocate for us, we can certainly either draw up resolutions or we can partner with other districts and help support them.
Great. Thank you. Any other Board topics? Mary?
So, for the second year in a row, our robotics team, which is, includes students from both the middle school and also the high school, has been invited to participate in STEM Day at the fair. So, they're opening the fair this year. Really exciting. It's an opportunity for our students to showcase the work that they've done over the last year, and also to collaborate and introduce themselves to other, other robotics teams in the metro. It's incredibly exciting. So, if you are not able to make it to the Monarch Festival, they will be there at the fair from 12:00 to 5:00 on Thursday, so pretty exciting.
Perfect time to go to that and then head to the Monarch Festival after.
And do both.
Yes.
And luckily, it's supposed to cool down.
That's right.
Yep. I'm very excited about that part, for sure, the cooling down.
Excellent. Thank you all. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you all. We'll adjourn our meeting at 8:52.